Okay, we're ready to start the public hearing on 78 Chestnut Street. We're only an hour and 15 minutes late, so it's been a fun evening so far. So, we've given this about a half an hour of time.
And I think we can do it.
Can you do it in maybe 15?
We can.
We can, yes.
We can try.
All right.
Introduction, I'm Beth Nolan, I represent the owners of 78 Chestnut Street, the trustees of the Henderson Trust, and Santa Andro Construction, the Albert. We're in front of the board tonight to seek site plan approval for scenic roads and for residential growths for areas. The historic commission has already issued the demolition permit pending site plan approval. A special permission from the ZBA will be required as the property's fronted is non-conformant. The development team in front of the board will be Bill Doyle of Doyle Engineering, Dan Quayle of Lincoln Architecture, Jade Cummings and Kelly Conley of Terra Finte, the landscape architects. Our presentation is in four parts. The first part will be a very brief but important overview of the processes used and the development concerns of the site, and that presentation will be by Bill. Dan Quayle of Lincoln Architects will then follow. Bill Doyle will then address site-specific engineering concerns, and then we'll close the presentation with landscape architect.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
Okay.
All right.
So, what you have in front of you right there is exactly what you'll see up here. I'm not sure if it's all the same order, but that's what we got. So, just the neighborhood map pictures, you can see it there. I don't know if you guys got copies of this via email through, however, but certainly it's there, it's certainly made available. Obviously, you know what it is, our lot is at 78 Chestnut Street, and these are the neighboring properties. To keep it quick, we won't go into details, you have the numbers in front of you. I think the read of all of those eight and a half by 11s. So, the process that we did is, and Dan will also speak to this a little bit, this graphic generally shows a bunch of different iterations that we went through before we even sat down with the consultants and Joe back before the turn of the year. And what we had done is we looked at the site several different ways. We looked at the topography, we looked at the ledge, we looked at the soils that existed there. It's like we always, we looked at the whole neighborhood and how it fit in. We sat with Joe Layden at the time and the consultants on two different occasions, at a bunch of different iterations. These are some of the iterations here, some of the iterations here, others we, you know, just were so far flung we didn't bother showing them. But we got to the point of really morphing the house to fit in the lot based on setbacks and topography and everything else. There's a bunch of different iterations of the house, and what you'll see and what Dan will present is kind of the final iteration of the house as we worked through with the consultants and with Joe over a several month period. We also, in that time period when we originally had submitted for the application, we have had a site visit and made some adjustments based on the site walk actually with the board and the neighbors. So, Dan will talk a little bit about the architecture and how the building came to be on the site, and then I'll come back to the engineering.
Well, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
In some of your site plan configurations, it looks like the garage is on the street side of the house. Why did the garage wind up behind the house?
I think when you start to see some of the elevations, and Dan can speak exactly how that came about.
Okay. Obviously, knowing the shape of the lot, it's approximately 150 feet wide. It's relatively parallel on the way back. And a lot of these earlier studies that we had done, the garage was always kind of a foreground element, didn't leave much of a lasting image having the garage doors facing front. So, as we developed a variety of different plans, we came up with a solution that pushed the driveway, kept the driveway on the left-hand side. The house ends up being essentially parallel with the street. Again, because of the size of the lot, we're approximately 58 feet in width outside the setback buffers. So, you're not faced with the garage doors facing the street. I think it's a more attractive elevation. What we tried to do with facades, it's essentially shingle and stone gambrel roof lines, trying to introduce the one-story band height and bringing the roof down to keep the scale of the building down. So, this is what you'd see from Chestnut Street. Off the side facing towards 74 is the side, 74 Chestnut is the side elevation of the garage. And on the next page...
Well, pardon me, but I don't think you really answered my question. Why did the garage wind up in the back?
Because we didn't want to see the garage.
Well, you've got one here with a side loaded garage with a garage at the front.
In working with the developer and owners, this is the preference after all the various iterations. We had some options for portco shares, and it wasn't something they wanted to have the garage at the front.
All right, so it's not that it wouldn't work on the site, it's that the developer didn't want to do it that way.
Essentially.
Okay.
In terms of the general materials and massing, again, trying to keep the scale and the roof lines down with that heavy one-story trim line. Again, the gambrel roof form repeats itself on the various elevations. This is the side that faces towards 84 Chestnut, the main house, the porch, and then this element is the backside of the garage far beyond. So, essentially, it's an L-shaped configuration for the house. And we brought, it may be tough to read, an eight and a half by 11, but we brought a couple of different site sections that we've done. These first two are essentially a site section cut. This top one is through essentially, say, 10 feet out in front of the house. So, you can see that the terrain up at 84 Chestnut, the grade is rising up, and you don't see 74 Chestnut, you see that in his version down below. 74 Chestnut is much closer to the street on the left-hand side. Then we've also cut a couple of building sections, cut right down the middle of the site.
74, the one being built now?
No, 78's the lumber building, 74 is on the left.
No, but which is the other?
77.
Across the street.
Oh, it's across the street?
Across the street, yeah. Wait.
Go ahead and keep it going, never mind. These next two site sections were cut right down the middle of the site looking both to the left and to the right. So, over on this side here is where Chestnut Street is right now. And you can see the topography drops down approximately three to four feet. The first floor of the house ends up being essentially at elevation 262, which is right about at street level. And then the terrain keeps rising up in the back. This lower section on the bottom shows the entire property. It's the front property's here on the street, and the back property line's way back there. So, the house is still sort of in the front quarter of the overall depth of the property. And then this other section is essentially looking the opposite direction again. Chestnut Street on this view is on the left-hand side. And you can see the terrain drops down and back up. And Bill's going to touch briefly on the underground retention and the septic system where those were put on the site dictated to some degree of how the house itself is situated.
Yeah, we'll just keep the pace up, we'll get right to the site. I'm just going to put this down here because this does speak to the topography that we were dealing with, which is one of the major constraints, one of the major design elements of the site, I guess. So, looking at the engineering, now we go to the basic black and whites. This does not represent the whole of the site. The rest of the site, you know, continues up, continues up south, some distance. What there is up at the south side of the site is the western aqueduct goes underneath there. We considered that a design constraint, we didn't want to go over that, we didn't want to go near it, plus the fact that the topography here is very high. If you remember the site sections, if you look at the entire site section, this is the south side, so it's actually high up here, and it slopes down to the house. Unfortunately, we're going in the good direction, but it's high here, and it slopes down to a natural low point in the property right about here. The existing house is right in through, there's the house here, and there's the garage that's here. The existing low point on the site is generally where the garage is, and you can see evidence of the garage being inundated with water over time. There's actually vegetation there and everything that suggests that it's a wet area. We have taken several trips out there in the recent spring rains to actually confirm that that is, you know, the low point where the water goes. So, what we wanted to do was pull the house away from that low spot, away from where all that water was going, and sit it kind of where you see it. Taking advantage of that natural low spot in the topography, and it's not just this site, it's kind of the, you know, the whole neighborhood, not the whole neighborhood, but a large catchment area kind of gets to this area. So, we took the opportunity to locate the drainage system in that area. So, instead of essentially the water expressing itself on the surface, we'll collect the water and get it into the ground and put it into the underground retention system. As you go up the hill, it becomes more rocky, there's less good soil, so we definitely, you know, to put a septic system up there was fighting against Mother Nature, essentially. The good soils on the site were down in the front, so Chestnut Street, good soils down the site. So, we end up with septic system here, underground detention here, again, because of the low point and the good soils, and then the building, the house here. And then as you get up to the backyard, it gets more outcrops and more rock and steeper slopes. So, essentially, if you remember what the sections look like, at the street dips down naturally, kind of comes back up to about the house elevation. House elevation and the street are about the same, so you just kind of have a sag in the site, and then from there it goes up. Pretty straightforward utilities off of Chestnut Street, underground detention and septic system in the backyard.
Is the house in the same spot as our sidewalk?
Yeah.
No adjustments.
Yeah, we adjusted some of the walls and stuff out front, and Jayden and Kelly can speak a little bit about that. But the corners of the house are generally where they were at the same, at the sidewalk.
Just while you have that, you're going to have a generator?
Yeah, we, so we have those items located, no, no, no. Those actually are going to go out back here because that would be within the setback. That's a change that we'll have to make. So, we'll look to put those out.
Are you aware of the DV, you know, standard at the copy line?
Forty DVA.
Oh, yeah, 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 decimals, yeah, 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 yeah. So, we're going to want to locate them here, maybe they could be there, but they can't be outside because they'd be within the setback. So, they'll be back here or in there.
Right, so the sound has to be attenuated.
Yeah, yeah.
Next one?
Next. Who's talking about lighting?
Lighting is shown on the landscape. We can speak to the ones that we add, but I think Dan should speak to the overall lighting since it was something that came out of his office. Just to start quickly, this is the tree removal and protection plan. So, we basically limit all of the tree removals within that limited work. And again, most of the ones that are being removed have to do with septic, stormwater retention, and the building sort of envelope. Everything else, periphery trees, of course, the ones that are along, what seem to be along the property line are just over it, but everything along here, everything along is intended to be protected, and everything along the stone wall in the back are intended to be protected, and the ones along the street. What we heard from you at the sidewalk was regarding the trees, the possibility of adding some more vegetation to create scale and a bit of screening on the house. And so, out of that sidewalk condition, we did include another tree here, and we put two more in this location. These are sugar maples, so they're going to have a nice big canopy to them. They're going to have a lot of presence and screening capability. This is a red oak, which again gets a nice big canopy and has a presence to help give that framing to the site as you look in coming along the roadway and catching the view in, bringing the scale and massing down, but not concealing the structure, being that this is going to be then a more open lot. There's no stone wall or anything here in sort of the typical western fashion. So, we've maintained that. We have gotten rid of the stone garden walls that were here, that's been approved by historic. We intend that that stone is then reused in the stone walls that are at the house on foundation so that it remains on-site and is reused. We did include a walkway stair here so that the circulation was more in keeping with folks coming in and out along this side as well as this area here. We also heard on the site the desire to show the foundation plan to the house to also kind of confirm that there would be proper screening and settlement along this front facade. And so, that's all been included in the plan, and that's a mixture of evergreen with one deciduous, so it will sort of brown the house in this upper plinth condition. The plantings as overall that we talked about on site are both native, they're water tolerant because they can deal with sort of the inundation of water that happens on the site. It also provides a way to slow water, get it to current, and have less runoff condition than is there presently.
How big is that red oak, just, how big is it?
Sure, I'm sorry. So, the red oak that we have here is a three to three and a half inch caliber. So, it's going to be about a 14-foot-high, 15-foot-high tree with a reasonable canopy spread on it. The sugars are also three to three and a half inch caliber. We do have, just to give a sense of scale to the plant material, thank you for asking, is, we have some service berry in here that are two to two and a half inch calipers, so it'll be like 12 footers. We have river birch that are 18 to 20 foot high, so it'll be a clump. We have white spruce, which can take the water condition that are 12 to 14 and 8 to 10. So, the goal is to create a naturalized screening edge and watering trap net along that edge that feels less like a bunch of sentry guards and more like a real ecosystem. And then, as to lighting, I'll talk to the one piece that we did add as part of this revision too, was just some wall stair lights, which are the VK Yacht Star, and they should be submitted to you in the package.
We don't have anything, Steve. We just need to know what everything is. Assume we know nothing.
So, it's the standard small plate that goes on the stone face.
It's aimed down.
It is aimed down, it's got a proper shield on it. And so, we have basically four of them, two on each side to create safety lighting.
What's in the backyard?
Along here?
Yeah.
So, do you want to speak about that, Danny?
Yeah. What about, what about the back yard?
Yes, so those are also...
It's very similar to the one that Yacht Mike was just talking about. We adjusted the stone wall back here. I'll just quickly go through the lighting and show you on the site plan maybe a little better. We've got one pendant light fixture below the arched entry. And then going down, there's a side entrance over here where there's a couple of sconces. W1s are hinkly fluorescent. Over the garage doors, there are some wall lights. R2s again, the ones in this back wall, similarly what Kelly was talking about here, there's step lights. And then along this back trellis between the pergola, the dom lights to sort of make the pathway along that, so. And then the total, the total lighting is 10,085.
Are they dogs kind of compliant? Is it because of the lenses, is that what makes them work?
Yeah, the lamps are shielded typically in all the fixtures.
They're all dark, 10,850?
Yeah.
And you said that it was 10,000?
Yeah, it was 10,850 plus the two that were added down at the stairs. So, it's probably closer to maybe 11,800.
Because on your handout it says 11,400.
I added in the street, these here, so we're at 11,429.
Could I ask a question? I wasn't on the sidewalk, so I didn't have a ton of seeing played out. But to me, I'm seeing the driveway, in other words, cross the house and go to the left. It's sort of like, to me, asking to point to your ear and doing this. I'm wondering what the rationale is for, I'm assuming it was the applicant saying this is what he wanted, but I just wanted to know what the rationale was.
Right, well, and there was also two existing curb cuts on that property, so the idea was to try and reuse both of those, both that was an amenity of the site.
Okay, to create, in other words, horseshoe.
Right. Yes, the driveway, the driveway here, as it exists, this is basically as it exists today.
Yeah.
This is pretty much left untouched. Are you asking, you know, why come all the way to there?
No, I wasn't on the sidewalk, so I didn't know it existed.
I didn't realize it was already a circular.
It looks exactly like it.
And did you also say there is no stone wall?
No, there's nothing, it's just open log at the part of the street.
Or lawn irrigation system?
Presently or in the future?
In the future.
Now that we know, it's a pretty wet site. Yeah, you're going to need to irrigate them.
You're not going to want to. What's the RGFA? You probably said it.
7,000 something?
7,000, 760.
Just for my own curiosity, what was the RGFA of the housing company that's there?
Well, currently, it is, I mean, one minute, currently 2,0676.
And what's the height of those average?
Yeah. The allowable is, is the red line up here at 2,976 or at 2,914, sort of six feet below is allowable.
Were you taking the average before construction or after construction?
Before.
Before.
Yeah, the exist, it's tough to see on these drawings. The existing average natural grade right now is about a foot and a half below where the proposed first floor is around the perimeter of the building, and then with 37 feet or a little bit below that.
I want to know if we decided to overlay the white mountains.
Just read, just stop, it must be the trees.
Oh.
I wanted to ask him about trees being removed. Can we look at the, that plan? Because to me, it looks like there's some trees being removed. I don't know if any of them are any kind of special specimen.
Yeah, a couple of them are, what are they, dogwoods or cherries? These ones here? Yeah. Those are the, so the dogwood and cherry that are next to the existing house structure, they're at the end of their lifespan, and they just, they feel actually more dangerous than, especially with the traffic that's going to happen with construction. I would think that they would kind of subvert the climb.
What about this one? Because if that was a beautiful tree and you could put the driveway around it, it would be really nice to have a tree there.
It's really, that's a really great point. The problem that we have is the dealing with the grade. And the more that we push, then we're right up against the property line and the grating, then we get into a wall condition to be able to facilitate that kind of movement. That one, that one's marked as a four-inch tee, which is just marked as deciduous, which means that it has not been properly identified by the surveyor.
And then what about some of these?
Sure, so in here, these tend to be affected because of the wall condition and the grating of getting the water out and collected here so that we don't end up with pooling in the backyard or stuck at the back of the house. In this zone, we have an oak, an oak, a pine, and an oak. Here's a pine, and this is another unidentified deciduous tree.
Because I look at most of those trees with Xs, and they're not the footprint of the house, so I just want to make sure that you agree that it makes sense.
There was nothing on the site that struck me as being a special tree that should be saved, and in fact, the ones in the front, you know.
For the pergola, I understand.
More in good shape.
But if you're worried about, you know, water, I mean, keeping some of those oaks will help take up some of that water.
That's really true. It's more the effect of the grading upon the roots. Knowing that roots aren't just at their canopy, but they're probably six, three times, four times, especially on a site like this that is sort of pristine in its sort of habitat condition. There's not been a lot of development back here. So, the root system here is probably very extensive, established between the evergreens and the deciduous canopy trees. So, when we start to, when we start to cut into these, I worry because of the slope and the potential for wind shear that things start to fall. And so, some of the goal was to just make this a zone that would not be at risk for any sort of drop and fall.
I assume you're going to landscape on that behind the wall.
So, behind the...
You grade it up, right, and into the rear?
Yes, so the goal here was to take and put a New England Showy Wildflower mix because this is really a lot of open meadow grass right now. It looks like they had paths through it, maybe even a little fire area. And so, the goal would be to sort of have this blend back into this greater landscape so that it felt part of that view out to the meadows or to the upper woodland area.
How wide is, oh, maybe you're not the person to ask, but how wide is the new driveway branching off of the existing wood?
This one, these three here, are you...
They're not in that direction, are they?
How wide is that?
Do you want to mark them? I think it's 10, I don't want to miss feet.
I heard it's 12.
I think the existing is 10.
You have it marked as 12 feet right here.
12 feet, yeah.
Yeah.
And the idea of coming around there again, as Kelly was saying, is the, you know, to keep this buffer as robust as we can, you know, we didn't want to go too wide on that.
Oh, well, yeah, but you're fighting for every foot. I mean, I'm just wondering, you've already got, the existing driveway is narrow. So, you have a wider driveway branching off than the narrower existing one. But I, I, we don't want to go through that discussion again, the driveway with discussion. One comment I had was, it would be, I think it might be nice to have more trees sort of in the front to break up the mass of the house.
Oh, meaning sort of being with driving cars around.
Well, yeah, I mean...
So, we have to be, we are stuck in this zone, this is where your infiltration is.
Yeah, that's right.
So, we can't do that because the trees being in that would be a long-term...
In front of that is the bleach field.
It is.
So, you're stuck with just trees along the road, huh?
On the other hand, this was, I didn't make this up, but this has always been historically open. Lawn-like, so it's really...
That's true.
We respect what it had been. That's why there isn't, you know, the, we did not, we are very accustomed to doing the screening planting along the road when we have these sort of buffers that we're trying to maintain and kind of increase the screening potential. But this has never been that, and so we did want to respect that.
Yeah. Is Danny going to offer this lot permitted but not build the house? Is this going to be like Loveland?
I believe so, but Dan is only the, only, the owner is the Henderson, so...
Oh, still is the Henderson family?
The Henderson trustees.
Okay.
So, this will be sold.
But as a permitted lot, right?
As a permitted lot or with the house on it.
Oh, yeah?
It just depends on how the Hendersons...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
But I'm just thinking, you know, in terms of the decision, there are certain things, you know, we want to be sure that the pictures that we're signing off on...
With 84 Loveland, your decision was quite specific to the design.
Yeah.
And I would imagine you, we think this is a wonderful design, so I would imagine it would be reflective that if there'd be any changes, Danny, to one extent.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, this was designed knowing what the board is looking for.
Yeah.
And that's why the house is facing a certain way, that's why the setbacks are open.
Yeah, I just, again, it's how to frame the decision so that we focus on keeping the things that we think should be candid.
Well, I think it's all these kinds of decisions.
Remember the first Loveland thing where it was like, so then they have to come back?
But then they have to come back.
They do, but then we get into the back and forth.
The crying, and then we've been in Nashville.
Okay. Good, anybody have any other comments? Nice, nice to be talking. You guys, landscaping look all right? Site engineering look all right? Everybody's nodding. Any comments from anybody in the audience of this application? Well, good, and I think...
Actually, I was just going to say, I'm at number 74.
Do you have your names?
Elias Rochelle, number 74, I live with Lauren Asher. You know, I just get a sense that the building is a little bit too big for the setting there, meaning that the houses on either side are significantly smaller. Maybe the largest is about 25% smaller than... Maybe the largest is about 25% smaller than this one. And so that's the only thing, just from an architectural standpoint, it's just gonna be very large on that lot with spacing.
Let me just take a second to sort of explain how this process works. We're conducting site plan review, we're the first board to review the project. It's a, it's a project on a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
So we're, under site plan review, we can't limit the size of a house by state statute. So we can't say it's too big or too small. However, it is going for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, because it's a, it's a non-conforming lot. The zoning board of appeals can, can make that kind of a ruling. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, what the, what the rules of game are. Good, any other comments? Yes?
Michael Caluard, I live on 84 Chestnut Street. And like Elias, again, I agree, I mean, I know it's not for this meeting. I think how they came up with 8,000, maybe they need to basically explain it at the zoning meeting, because it's an exceptionally narrow plot.
It is.
There's one thing which they didn't want us to put up on there, and that is the sidelines towards my house. They've eliminated a lot of very large trees. And part of the problem for us is that, given where they've actually placed the house, it is beautifully designed to take advantage of looking over my garden. I mean, beautifully, all through my back garden. I'd moved it 10 feet, either way, you would probably lose that view. But it has the perfect view over my back garden, and also into my kids' bedrooms and my bedroom.
Oh.
So I'm not pleased about that. So I have reservations about the position of the house, but that's, I think, up to the board, perhaps up to the zoning.
Where is your house? I'm sorry.
Does it show up in the new, in the proposed site plan? Is that house showing up?
Yeah, so actually, if we were to look at the proposed house, we're gonna end up being, you know, you know, something in that, in that attitude. And then there is, there is a large grade difference from here goes down to here. If you look at, I'm not sure, a good one would be the side section.
With our views is probably this one here. This is cut a few feet in front of where the proposed house was, and this is 84. And when you're out, this other side section is taken out essentially through the center line of the street. So you're seeing 74, 78, 84, so that, I mean, this is the problem.
So the one taken a few feet in front of the house is actually cutting through 84?
Yeah. Yeah, they're approximately the same distance from the street to both of the.
Well, it makes us, I thought you said that the proposed house is further from the street than 84, and that's why it overlooks their garden.
Further, you put up, you.
The way you drew it made it look like it's further from the street, see?
Yeah, it's essentially, and maybe it's, you know, you're a tight black facility, but that's generally where it is here. And, you know, so the topography here goes uphill, you know. Uh, 267 is first floor there.
Or 262.
262, so about five feet, five feet difference, five feet below first floor elevations. And what has happened in here through the landscaping, there's a natural buffer of trees that occurs there, and then.
Yeah, but can I just add, that natural buffer you're eliminating, okay? Those trees which are on the boundary, are the smaller ones, all of the big ones you're eliminating.
So along this edge, the trees here that are along the existing stone wall, which include 36-inch oak, 20-inch oak, 30-inch oak, 16-inch oak, 16-inch oak, 18-inch oak, 15 to 20-inch oak, 18-inch oak, 18-inch oak, 24-inch oak, 28-inch oak, 18-inch oak are maintained. We've removed a 10-inch pine, 6-inch deciduous, 30-inch oak, that's probably the most robust of the trees in there that are being removed. A 28-inch pine, 12-inch tree species, 6-inch, I can't tell what that one is underneath. The 12-inch oak here, 24. So I think this, this tree here, and then the 36 and the pine, I think are the trees that probably you're reacting to, because they have the most sort of mass to that.
They're the biggest, and they're the ones which block basically the view of what would.
So what does that look like in the post-condition? What do you put back? Nothing's.
We have there. So along this edge, we've included a, one of the oaks, so this would be a 14 footer, let's say, and one of the birches, which is a 12 to 14 foot high, I'm sorry, the birch was an 18 to 20. So you have an 18 to 20 here, we have, let's say, a 14 to 15 here. The ones that are in contestment here as far as their presence are in this location. So from this, and there's the existing, there's an existing evergreen here that is remaining in place. So the thought was to try and create a sense of gap filling or edging along this side. In this place, we have an amalanker species, which is going to be the 2 to 2 and 1/2 inch calber species. And then this is all ground paint to provide sort of that understory screening from the canopies down to the slope as it's working itself up the hill.
All right, now I can, I can sort of see why you went up the oak, I'm trying to recall where the pine was.
Yep, so the pine is right here.
Yeah.
And the oak is right here.
And that has to.
Well, they're dropping the grade yet.
They're dropping the grade.
Yeah.
It's a grading issue. And spatially, we wouldn't want to have the, these trees, anything in this sort of zone adjacent to the house under post-construction. You'd have a lot of risk of things falling and dropping, and it's general death, given the compaction issues. We're further complicated here because of the grading for the site to create.
I'd say that sometimes we do make conditions that trees will be protected.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And then if they die, they get to be replaced, those big old trees.
We don't remove any large tree lightly. As a landscape architect, I don't, I wouldn't do very well if I cut them all down. So it is not done without great thought and care to the site.
This gentleman's gonna definitely miss those trees, because they obviously have great, big, they are great secret.
Absolutely.
So what else can you be confident?
What's in filling between the birch and the oak?
Sure, so we have, in this zone, I have a Pedoda dogwood. So that's gonna, again, as they, those flush out, they're a great understory, they're gonna get 15 feet tall, and they're gonna be a good screening block. They like to be in that semi-light condition. There's another one here. In this zone here, I have a Kelly campus, which again.
Those things are all deciduous though.
They are all deciduous, yes. These are all deciduous, because we were trying to work with the deciduous structure that is there presently, and especially looking at, trying to blend in that edge versus create that century line of evergreen.
On the other hand, white pines do grow there.
We do have some white pines that we put here, because there was such an openness to this area of the site. We did look at the evergreens to try and create some buffer between the properties in this more open location. That would be mutually beneficial to both properties.
Is there any way you can move the house forward a little, or just because of the low point and drainage, it's not possible?
I, you know, it's, it's a great question, and we really did look at that, because that came up on our sidewalk.
Yeah.
This is such, I mean, you can see it in the overall section. Everything is doing this. And when you have the properties here, it's all, it's all coming into this moment. And so to start to push this forward, we're really pushing that structure into the natural low spot. And that in itself, I think, puts the house at jeopardy for the water activity. They're also receiving so much water off of the back hill as it comes down. There's, the water was a prime reason for things to be sited the way that they were.
Well, I think you probably need to cut another section through, if you could go back.
Planner section.
The plan. I think you probably need to cut another section through here or here, over to their house, to see how it relates to their garden and to their house, and the views. And I think you're gonna have to add more screening.
Kim, what do you think? Would it benefit for more screening?
I was not originally concerned, because there's so much mature canopy that they're saving, and what was coming out seemed so, such a small percentage of what was being maintained.
Yeah.
But we currently have, you know, a comment that opposes that. So maybe one or two additional evergreen trees in that buffer to put back the evergreen that's being missed would be a good compromise.
Can I, can I ask you, just for my own knowledge base? So we have, basically, the north is on this side. So this is, the sun comes here and it goes this way.
Yeah.
How far over is your garden from this? I would guess you get pretty significant shade along the hedgerow, or you don't?
No.
So how close is your garden to this edge?
Right on it.
Um, well, why don't we, let's leave it, let's do this. I think with the exception of, unless there are other comments from the audience? Was that everything? All right, with the exception of that, of the screening issue, because we talked about the size issue, maybe what we could do is work on modifying the landscaping in that area to improve the screening.
That would be great.
And then we'll continue the hearing to review the draft decision. And perhaps what you could do is just give Betsy, our new planner, like, the revised landscape drawing, so that we have that for the record when we review the draft decision. It's unreasonable?
Definitely reasonable.
Can you show their house in your revised landscape drawing?
I don't, if it exists on.
The revised one.
If it exists on survey.
Well, it's on.
Okay.
It's on there.
So as long as a Google Earth takeoff is.
It's close enough.
Close enough, okay.
Maybe you can show both houses, and again, add another section.
Yes.
Is the board satisfied with the drainage issues and the water issue?
Yes, we have a consulting civil engineer who reviews all of the design for runoff and grading and those sorts of things. And he's satisfied, in this case, that it's gonna work.
And can I, your wife, I believe, is at the sidewalk. And we came back with the engineer and the developer, and they went back through the calculations just because it is such a problem. So the way it's designed, we really feel it's going to mitigate the water in your yard.
Yeah, well, usually we don't get water in our yard, or very little. And the Hendersons had a sump pump running almost continually.
They're.
And now that it's not running, we're getting water into our yard, so.
So can you show their house as well as that house?
Well, what can I ask then? Where does it punch?
Not to his house.
We're getting water. They had a lot of water, I mean, they had a full day's of water.
So I think, I think we'll continue to what. We're gonna continue this one. They'll review the draft decision.
Now, we had 7:45, 8:30, 9:15.
Sure.
There's so much.
Although sometimes what we do is put the review of draft decisions off to the, so we're not just sitting there reading while people are. But it.
Well, we're gonna have to change that.
Yep, okay, we agree.
Yep.
And you don't have to be here for us to read the draft decision.
So what you're looking at from us is a revised plan, so it'll be revision number three. It's gonna show some added screening along the property line area in question. It's going to show the addition of the two houses on either side of the property line to help with the understanding of adjacent structure. I'll make sure that you also receive the full packet of all of these fixtures with that in hand, so there's no confusion. And then Dan will submit a section that is cut through, showing the relationship of this structure and the screening to the adjacent property. Is that correct?
That's right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
What do you think?
This is, you're looking at it everywhere, because everything's stacked up.
Well, and in fact, I had no idea of where these certificates were. I use certificate, voter certificate badge for 88 Marion and 13 Pigeon Hill. I had no idea.
Oh, really? Oh, well, then we don't have to do that.
Just a few more things.
Well, who wants to, who wants to jump in? Oh, she did? Well, they're up there somewhere, so we'll just do them next time.
Well, do you have a deadline on those?
I don't even know.
88 Marion and 13 Pigeon Hill.
88 Marion, that was, I don't think that was.
They say from Joe.
Or is that the one, Wesley Stone? Well, was 88 Marion a big pressure? I thought those were the changes to that property. That was the key, wasn't it? Oh, who knows? We'll figure it out later.